I don't think there's any club in Hollister that's lasted 100 years. And many of you have seen some of the things we've done over these years, one of which is we built the first heel pad at the hospital. But then they had a nice project, I think Gordon may have been on the board at the time, but they decided to build a building over the heel pad, right? This is how things work. But they did put the heel pad up on the second floor, so you can go up there and there's a little emblem, the Rotary emblem that started it all off. The other thing that we've done is, and I've been working almost 30 years with Rotary, and Rudy, you were in high school at the time, I think, when I was a Rotarian, but 30 years is a long time, but the Hollister Rotary Club has been giving out scholarships to our local high school students for over 100 years. And we now have given out over a million dollars in the past 100 years. And recently, this year, there's a student from Hollister, young lady that graduated in 2013, from San Benito High School at the time. She just won a global grant scholarship, which is a huge thing in Rotary. And today it was authorized to give her $30,000. But that's the good news. The bad news is it costs $100,000 a year to attend Oxford, and she's there now. In 1978 Rotary decided that they were going to take on a worldwide, a global project, and that was to eradicate polio. And what we say now is we're this close. Because there's only, out of the 195 countries in the world right now, there's only two that are endemic, and that's Pakistan, Afghanistan. Afghanistan's a little hard to get in and give polio drops, but we're making progress. There were less than 20 people that had polio last year, the wild virus polio. So we are making progress. We've been working with the Wheelchair Foundation out of Blackhawk, California, since 2005, the inception of the Wheelchair Foundation. And we've been helpful in being able to donate 1.2 million wheelchairs around the world and at home. And I was so involved in that project that people would show up at my house with wheelchairs, and so I had a garage full of wheelchairs. And there's a problem there because no one will take those wheelchairs, not even Goodwill. You can't donate them to the hospital because they're used and they present a liability, so there's the issue there. But Rotary's going to continue. I'm wrapping up a century of service. And a gentleman by the name of William Baker, Bill Baker, is going to start the next century here on May 16th. And I want to thank everyone here tonight for your support. Rotary uses the support of the local community, and we like to return projects that benefit the city and county of San Benito. Thank you.
Okay, so wow, yeah, that's a lot. And I just want to, a little plug, that they're always recruiting members, and so if anybody's interested, thank you again, and I look forward to presenting the proclamation officially at your dinner next week. Thank you. Okay, so let's move, let's move on to our next, our next proclamation around water awareness. And for this item, I'm going to actually turn it over to Councilmember Deanda.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. The City of Hollister recognizes the critical importance of water to our community's health, economy, and environment. California's arid climate, population growth, and changing climate conditions continue to place pressure on our water resources. Reduced snowpack, infrastructure limitations, and environmental needs in areas like the delta make efficient water use more vital than ever. In response, Hollister joins cities, counties, and agencies across the state in proclaiming May 2025 as Water Awareness Month. This initiative encourages all residents, businesses, institutions, and public agencies to review their water use, adopt water-saving practices, and consider long-term conservation strategies. Everyone is urged to contact the Water Resources Association of San Benito County for ideas and assistance in using water wisely. By working together, we can ensure a reliable, high-quality water supply for both current and future generations.
Thank you. Is there someone here to receive the proclamation? Okay, please come to the podium. If you'd like to say a few brief, few words, then please, please take the mic.
I'm actually presenting a presentation, so, yes.
Okay, so that is actually our next item. So here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to have Councilmember Deanda come down and bring you the proclamation, and then when we move on to the next item, and then you can do your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on then to item 6.1, Water Awareness Month Presentation. And so I'm going to ask Steph, would you please give us a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, William, Bi, Public Works Director. Tonight we have a presentation from Jennifer Cosio-Areano, Aviano, it's close. The San Benito County Water District Conservation Program Manager. She's going to present a presentation on water conservation and water awareness.
Do we have a clicker? Oh. Good evening, councilmembers and the public. So today I'm going to be giving a presentation on Water Awareness Month, going over a few of the programs and the rebates that we have available to all of City of Hollister water customers. My name is Jennifer Cosio-Areano, and I'm the Water Conservation Program Manager for San Benito County. The clicker's not, oh, nevermind. Okay, so the purpose of Water Awareness Month is to raise awareness to all of San Benito County residents on being able to conserve water, especially during the start of May and going into the summer months. I'll, like I said, I'm going to be going over some of the rebates and programs and some water conservation tips for residents and the public that is here. So May starts the irrigation season, so it's very important for residents to adjust their irrigation season, systems for the season. We do offer free service, so we really urge residents to give us a call if they need help with any irrigation adjustments, if they think that they have a leak, give us a call. Since water is a finite resource, we want to really ensure that residents are conserving water in their homes. If you conserve water, you save money, so if you've ever seen a really high water bill, you're letting water go to waste, you're probably not taking care of your water resources as much as you need to be in your homes. We also do offer free low water, free low-flow appliances that help you conserve water, such as showerheads, aerators, and toilets. So here are a few outdoors and indoor saving tips that you can implement in your homes now that May is starting. So we really want to enforce that you water your lawns between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM to conserve water and avoid evaporation. As the weather's heating up and warming, well, by watering your lawns early in the morning or late at night will help conserve water. You can also go ahead and replace your grass lawn. By doing so, you'll be conserving water and changing to a drought-tolerant landscape. Essentially, you'd be, you would be saving thousands of gallons of water each year by doing that. We really try to get residents to use drip irrigation versus actual sprinkler systems to avoid runoff and evaporation when you water your grass lawns. And with indoor water conservation tips, if you upgrade to the low-flow appliances, they will also save you water in the long run, up to hundreds, two thousands of gallons. And we really try to enforce and remind residents to turn off their water when they're brushing their teeth, shaving their face, or, you know, just close the faucet so you're not wasting water. So I'm going to teach everyone about our rebates. So we do have a turf removal program rebate. We pay residents, City of Hollister water customers can participate in this rebate. We pay $2 per square foot. The minimum is removing 100 square feet, up to 1,000 square feet, so you can get between 400, sorry, it's 200 square feet. You can get between $400 to $2,000 in a rebate. This does require pre-inspection. If you look at the picture up on the screen, that is actually one of the projects that one of your customers had implemented in their home. So they removed the majority of their grass, they removed up to the thousand square feet that the rebate provided. She did permeable pavers in the front of her home, so she just went ahead and put sand in between the pavers. We don't allow any concrete filling. What we want is that for the water, if it rains, or, you know, you use water on your lawn, your upgraded lawns, to go ahead and be absorbed into the ground, so they replenish our groundwater aquifers. So they replenish our groundwater aquifers. They also did some drought-tolerant plants and gravel. We also have a landscape hardware rebate. So you can get up to a 50% rebate on landscape hardware. We really stress to use smart irrigation controllers and MP rotators to save water in your homes. And we also provide ultra-low-flow toilets. So if you have a pre-1992 toilet in your home and you change to ultra-low-flow toilet, you can save thousands of gallons of water, up to 13,000 a year if you do so. And like I said, we do provide free home surveys in your home. We do an extensive indoor and outdoor leak inspection. This helps a lot of customers because sometimes if you can't afford a plumber, just give us a call. We'll send our technician out there to try to locate the leak. Water bills do get expensive. So we want to be there to help our residents with our programs. And if there are some repairs that are minor that we can help you with, we will repair them. So we'll be able to provide a bit more service to residents. I did, and put our QR codes for Facebook and our Instagram pages if you are interested in any of our rebates and programs. We do have some more, but today I just focused on the water conserving rebates and programs that we do offer. So if anyone wants to scan or give us a follow to receive more information and updates, feel free to do so. And then here's more of our information. Thank you so much for your attention and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for, before you step off the podium, let me just check in with my fellow councilmembers to see if there are any questions. Thank you for that important and great information. Any questions, comments, questions on this side? Okay, well, thanks again. And I hope that our public will take advantage of all these opportunities. I think there's some great water-saving opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, so now we're going to move into public input. So this is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item, not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the council. If you are joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you are joining us via Zoom using a cell phone, please press asterisk nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or talking or taking action on any item not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have any comments?
Mayor Stevens, I have one for Sean Dempsey, but I don't see him present. He's turned in earlier today. Those are all the speakers we had. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then we will move on then to the consent calendar. Do we have any members of the council that have any brief questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any, then I will ask the clerk, are there any public comments on the consent agenda?
There are no comments for any of the consent agenda items.
Okay. So would, would anybody on the council like to send in a motion, further discussion?
Motion to approve the consent items.
I'll second.
I'll third.
Well, we don't need a third, but let's do, let's just do a roll call.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Deanda.
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to our next item, which is a resolution for the 2025 weed abatement program and hold a public hearing. May we please have a staff report?
Mayor Stevens, I believe Chief Padola should be online. He's going to give you the staff report.
Chief Padola, if you can go ahead and accept the promotion to panelist. Or you can unmute.
All right. If he unmutes, then I'll let him give it. I wasn't 100% ready to give this. But what's before you tonight is a public hearing for declaring certain properties. So last council meeting that we had this item, we were authorized to go out and designate these properties. Before you tonight is going to be a list of the actual properties that were identified and receive notices that they need to abate the weeds. And then at a future council meeting, when the properties have abated their weeds or they haven't, we'll bring those final properties before you for us to actually go in and remove the weeds. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council? Questions? No. I guess my only question, could you just explain, just in general, like what a weed abatement program means and then what is the purpose? Obviously, we have our fire chief here, and it's likely related to fire prevention. But can you just briefly just talk about that so that our public can hear that?
Yeah, so as you started to explain, the weed abatement program, our prevention division goes out and they identify properties that are overgrown with weeds and are a fire hazard. We then notify the property owners that they need to abate the weeds to reduce the risk. We do this at the beginning of the wildland fire season, ahead of when the fires are really hitting. But we identify these properties and ask them to mitigate the weeds so that we don't have fires burning out of control on these properties. We allow them a certain period of time in order for them to clear the weeds. And then if they do not clear the weeds, then we go out, we come back to the council and we get authorization. We go out, we clear the weeds from their property, and then we recoup the cost of that. And the intention of this is to reduce the fire risk throughout our community.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we don't, we don't have any questions? I don't think we have any other, but, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I know you're just standing in, chief. You're doing a great job. I don't know if you can answer this one because you haven't gone through the material exactly. But it says that there's an estimated cost of $8,000. And I'm thinking that's for the whole project. But it's on a like a per location basis? Is there like a breakdown of like each unit?
Yeah, so, so next, next council meeting, we'll have on there the actual contract for the weed abatement. But it's done dependent upon the size that we have to abate, and it's on a per-acre cost. And then there's a cost depending on whether or not we can go through and disc it, or if it has to be removed using weed eaters and individual people doing it. So it's a whole matrix of how we do it. The $8,000, approximate $8,000 is consistent with what we've spent over the past years for this. Like I said, it depends on the contract that you guys approve at the next council meeting. But $8,000 is in line. I think last year, we were just under that amount. And then, as I stated, we recoup that cost. So we then send a bill, we collect an administrative fee on top of that, but a bill for the cost to mitigate. And it's all done on a per-acre amount for the property that we have abated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. So we will, seeing no other questions, we'll go to public comment?
And just for the record, it is a public hearing.
Okay.
For this one.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing then?
Yes, there are no public speakers.
And do we need any other discussion or deliberation from the council? Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on then with the agenda. Council business, item 10.1, update regarding the fire services, the Fire Protection Services Contract Amendments within, with the county of San Benito and the City of San Juan Batista. Can we please have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to present. David Marioni, city manager. And I have Chief Goulding here in the audience as you just heard him present as well. And so today's report builds on the last series of reports that we brought forward. So as we built the staff reports, we have kept it as the full timeline going through. And so I'll pick up from where we left off at our last meeting. At our last meeting, we provided a presentation on the terms that the county of San Benito and the city of San Juan brought forward and sought further direction from the city council. Those proposals were rejected as they were not aligned with our option E, which included the requirement of 3O staffing. And so upon conclusion of that discussion, we did receive direction to continue negotiations with the county in San Juan, with those ad hoc committees, including the fire chief, the union president, and management from each jurisdiction. The next day, the county board of supervisors then received an update and provided direction to their staff. They gave direction to move ahead on planning efforts with San Juan Batista on the creation of a fire department and provided initial direction for a new county ad hoc committee assigned to work with San Juan Batista moving forward. And additionally, the board suspended the county fire contract negotiation ad hoc committee, resulting in the county no longer having an active ad hoc assigned to negotiate the fire contract with the City of Hollister. And then finally, the board of supervisors gave direction that if the City of Hollister would like to submit a counterproposal, the board of supervisors would discuss such counterproposal in an open meeting. So if we wanted to propose something else, we could send it over to them. They'd have a full meeting like this, but they have disbanded their ad hoc committee. Following up, so that was the morning, you know, we had our council meeting Monday. That meeting went very late. We had the board of supervisors the next day. We did send later that day, on the 22nd, we did attempt to schedule a meeting with San Juan and the county, their ad hoc committees. And as directed, we received a response from the county highlighting the direction that they received from their board earlier that day, which I had just reviewed with you. As a result, there has not been a meeting scheduled as requested by your council on the 21st of April. Moreover, the board of supervisors has held two planning sessions involving the county fire department ad hoc committee, project consultants, and representatives from San Juan since that last board of supervisor meeting. As an outcome of these discussions, their ad hoc committee has recommended that the county take the initial step of hiring a fire chief, either interim or permanent, to help guide the development, the planning of their new department. At tomorrow's board of supervisor meeting, the staff of the county will be requesting approval of a proposed job spec for their fire chief position. And so today, we are bringing back this update. We'd like to, and seeking further direction on next steps. As mentioned at the last meeting, we did have the option E, which was part of, or the, the, in option E, there was a one-time payment requested of 1.25 million. And that was within 30 days of receiving the proposed terms. And that is to offset the cost of the prolonged negotiation period. That date is the end of the week, which is May 9th. And so we wanted to make you aware of that. And option E also requires a 90-day negotiation period upon approval of the proposed terms by the Hollister City Council. And if those 90 days, if that 90-day negotiation period lapses prior to reaching an agreement with the county in San Juan, then we would just continue to provide the services until the expiration of the agreement on December 20th. Give me one moment here. Yeah, that date is July 7th for the 90 days. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we seek further direction on next steps.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions, questions on this side? Questions on this side? Okay, not seeing any, so I'm going to move on to public comment. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we have one. Speaker Mia Casey.
Good evening, council. It's kind of hard to know what your plans are, what direction you're going to give. But I, you know, I've committed to going to all of these meetings and staying abreast of what's happening with fire protection because I think it's one of the most crucial things going on right now. I was truly disappointed in the actions of the supervisors last week to just cut off any further negotiation. You know, they've been saying all along, we don't have money, we don't have money. And they keep coming up with money for specific projects they want to do. And one of the supervisors did mention, well, the JPA money that was set aside, $5 million, we could use that. And they're like, no, we're going to build our department with that. So it's, it's not that they don't have funding, it's that they're choosing not to use it to work together. And that's really disheartening. You know, our firefighters do such a wonderful job. They deserve every bit of support. And in a community this size, working together, all the agencies working together, you're going to get much more bang-for-your-buck and service than you do with everyone trying to do their own thing. So like I said, it's truly disheartening. I did do a lot of research on, you know, there was a lot of comments made by them regarding our fire department budget being so out of control and growing 300% in 12 years. And I actually went back and looked at their other public safety departments. And it was very interesting because their departments have all grown between 250 to 300%. You know, their sheriffs, their jail. So that 300% that's been thrown around out there is just, it doesn't hold water. All, all costs have gone up significantly across public safety. So I just, I want to say that our, you know, I hope you will continue to support our firefighters. I hope you, I don't know what you're going to do going forward. San Juan Batista's kind of left hanging out there. And now, you know, they've been a good partner to us. And it's a shame that you've got one agency that just won't work together with the rest of them. So I hope that you'll hold firm and not just go back and offer more to them because they haven't really, they haven't really worked with you. They've just made their demand and expected you to capitulate. And I just hope you'll stay strong and figure something out. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Casey. Any other speakers?
Those are all the public comments.
Okay, then I will close the public comments and come back to the council. Any, oh.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, the fire chief and I continue to work together on this and have been looking at, you know, many different ways. But we still continue to explore. However, we did want to bring this forward to you today for discussion, especially given the 30 days.
Okay. Any questions, comments, questions, comments?
I just have a quick comment.
Go ahead.
You know, I was hopeful that we would be able to come to an agreement. I still feel that the three jurisdictions, Hollister, San Juan Batista, and the county of San Benito are better together. And having four fire stations versus what we're going to be able to come up with with the county in San Juan Batista, whatever they end up doing, I still feel like we're better together and can provide a better service. So, but I'm hopeful for the future. We'll see what they come up with. And things are getting more expensive each and every day. And these machines are difficult to produce. They're, the, it's hard to make a firefighter. It's hard to make a fire engine. And, you know, we'll see what the future holds. But I still contend that we're better together. And we'll see with the future what pans out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Resendez, did you have a comment? Or Councilmember Morales, do you have a comment?
I have a, what does this leave San Juan Batista?
So I'll, I'll let the city manager respond to this one. But I, we, we did invite them to come to the table, both of our partners. And they, we didn't hear from San Juan Batista. They did not respond. And the county said they didn't, they didn't need to meet with us because they had made other plans. So that's where we're at. But, Mr. Marioni, do you have anything more to add to that?
No, what it looks like, based on the staff reports that are being published, is that they're working with the county right now, exploring options.
Yeah, so San Juan Batista, it looks like that's what they're doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I just want to thank the city manager, the chief, our firefighters, for diligently working towards a resolution. I, for one, am optimistic. As the vice mayor had stated, we are a small community. We should We should never close the doors on any opportunities that presented to us in the future. But we can't operate under assumptions, and we just have to be very clear about that in matter of fact. So what I'd like to do, moving forward, is number one, I'm going to see if the mayor would entertain a motion to dissolve the ad hoc committee. And I would also let the city manager, there's been, so we've spoken about the budget previously, and you've said that it wasn't in good financial health. I obviously have made mention that that's because of the decisions of the previous council. Can you just point out aside, if you want to talk about the fire situation, that's fine too, but what are some other main points that have led to those, to that bad financial situation that we find ourselves in now?
So as mentioned at previous budget meetings and strategies, bringing forward those different ideas, I think, A, one of the biggest challenges, and I showed it with a couple fund balance graphs, was with the introduction of the rescue plan funds. When those funds came in, that was $9.7 million of one-time funds. If you look at the budget, the ongoing funds kind of correlated with that new money coming in. And so as you make spending decisions that are based on one-time revenue, when that one-time revenue runs out, you are then holding the bag for those, for those costs. Obviously, we've had the discussions regarding asking for additional revenue for this contract. This is a discussion that has been going on for over a year now. We've looked at different ways of looking at the numbers. These have ranged from a shortfall of $4 million. The last, for this year, the last request that we put forward was $3.9 million, basically for next fiscal year. But as you operate any program in a deficit situation, and if your revenues aren't aligning with that, then you are going to draw from your reserves to balance your budget. And so when we came in initially with the first budget, when I was in this chair, and realigned everything to where the actuals were projected, put in all of the salaries, the positions of what was approved and what was budgeted, then you saw the budget jump up to where you had a $9 million deficit. And so I pointed out in a handful of the slides where you had vacancy savings. If you talked to anybody, we would buy things, you would make purchases on vacancy savings. Well, if you, if you have 30% vacancies and you're out making purchases against those vacancies, but your actuals are coming in at 100% or over in your salary spending, then you either had your salary projections off and you didn't have enough folks budgeted in, or something was out of line. And because you're then spending it twice, right? Because if you, if you had a number of $20 million and you said, "Well, we're going to save $4 million, we'll go spend that $4 on other things that we need." And then the year ends and you did spend $20 million on salary, well, then you just spent $4 million that you were not planning on. And that's where I showed those budget to actuals, where your budget and what came in was far above, and you should never be above. Because that's the authority you have, you should always, your spending should always be within. If you're going to go over, then you get the budget approval to go over. We talked at budget about just outdated revenues. So we looked at not only the fire contract, but we're finalizing, William will be bringing back our rate studies, as well as we finalized the user fee studies. So those are now in effect as of the beginning of July, or, excuse me, April. We did have some challenges on the audit side, which impacts your ability to get grants and your borrowing ability, negative fund balances. So what we walked into was fund balances. So you think of the general fund, we talk about the general fund all the time, right? We have other funds. You may have a fund for grants, you may have a grant, like for the COVID FEMA grant. We spent money, you bill it against it, and then you're hoping to get a reimbursement to offset it. But you're spending general fund first, and you're hoping to get those dollars back. If I look at those, that's over $700,000. Now, I will be bringing back something where I've been working all this time, basically since I've worked here, to get a reimbursement, but it's going to be nowhere near what that expenditure was. So that's where we talked about, as part of a five-year plan, I have to actually repay those. You can't sit with negatives on your fund balance, on your fund summary. That's just not what you do. Basically, what you're doing is, is you are, you are using general fund to offset funds, but never bringing that money over. So you're not, you're spending it when you don't have it. And so when I looked at all of those different funds, that was part of the strategy, you had over $2 million that was sitting out there in different funds, right? You had a road project one, where we're wrapping that one up. The budget I'll bring forward will have that contemplated. You had the safer grant, you had about $700,000 and change that was cost billed to that fund in hopes of getting reimbursement back, that were overbilled to that or disallowed, a combination of both. The same thing on the COVID side. So you put those two together, there's almost a million and a half dollars. I can't just have a negative in a book and ignore it. You have to have a plan to come forward to pay for that. That is an audit finding in itself. We've had various one-time purchases, many vehicles. I mean, it's not that these items weren't needed, but they do cost money, right? Your machinery or equipment that's out there. We've had some costs back and forth on changes to the general plan, we've had those discussions. Then I look at things where our insurance, just like everybody else, insurance costs are up, all of our costs are up. I'm going to be looking at, just on a sneak peek, when I bring the budget forward for discussion, I've got my insurance rates. Our insurance is up by $890,000. I can't just say, "Ah, we'll make that, don't worry about that, let's keep doing things." I have to fund that first. I have to fund my debt, my insurance, all of those costs first. You know, we had, the landfill has costs that we, we have to pay. You know, we own the five acres out at the landfill. I'm going to be bringing costs associated with a 10-year permit on those. Those are real costs. And so as I bring those forward, I have to keep all of that in mind. And so what we had projected for you, to bring forward to you, is a plan that gets you back to where your reserves are in place at the right levels per your budget policy and gets you back on the right path. All of those strategies are all outlined in your 2016 budget and fiscal policies. However, if you stray away from those, then you find yourself in a position where you now have to pay all this stuff back. And as you draw from your reserves and draw from your reserves, I can't bring you, let's say you have $10 million in reserves, and the difference between expenses and revenue is $8 million short. I can do that in a year, it's called deficit spending, but you're using your fund balance, and that isn't allowed use. You can bring over some of your fund balance. Everyone does it, it's normal. It's the amount that you bring forward. And so if, if you do that in one year, and now you've got two left, but you are building on an $8 million shortfall, I can't bring you something the next year that says a general fund will be a negative number. I can't do that, because then what I'm doing is I'm going to the state and saying, "Can I use other funds to offset it?" And that's not, that's not a position you're ever going to want to be in, that's a bad step. And so the budget we'll be bringing forward is based in correcting all of those items. So at the end of the day, I mean, we got a lot of money from the Fed, they printed the money. This is not unique to just here, you're seeing it in a lot of places, where that one-time infusion, especially in communities that didn't get impacted negatively with their revenues through the rescue plan. So you take a community like Hollister, right? You have, it's the community on, in general, they get up, most of your working adults leave the community. They spend their money in San Jose, Gilroy, on the way there, way home, they shop there. Unfortunately, that sales tax leakage, we don't see those dollars. The pandemic, everybody's working from home, everybody's staying home. You had some businesses open, you had Hollister Farms right before, you got Jamba Juice, always. We actually had things happening during the pandemic, you had the Parklets go in. So you saw the revenues continue to, you know, increase, and then you get a one-time infusion of rescue plan money, printed money, which that also had an impact on the economy overall, which spikes inflation. That hits your one-time costs overall, right? All of a sudden, the price of everything, including staffing, goes up. Once that tapers off, you're still stuck with it, right? So when you have 9% inflation, it goes to 2%. Everybody gets excited, "Oh, it's only 2%," but it didn't go down. It went from nine, and now it's at two, and you live with that pretty much forever. And so as I look at those items, it's very clear, and that's why I've been trying in my budget presentations to let you know, and we even had it last year, of, "Look, this is, this is your one-time revenue, try to, try to keep the ship open, or ship afloat while we adjust our revenues." We've gone another year, we had said we needed roughly, call it $4 million for this year, and we're in a position where we didn't get any of it, but we provided a great service. And so emotions aside, that is not money that we have. I can't spend money, I cannot budget funding that we don't have. If I, I was running reports earlier, if I look at overall from the personnel side, from 1920, total budgeted, or I'll go total, total activity versus budgeted, 20, or 27 million overall, then it goes to 30, or 27.7, then it goes to 31.8, then it goes to 27.1. So that was your actual, so that was a year of vacancy. And then it goes 36 million, or 34 on activity, or on actual, then to 37.8. So you're in a, you're in a tick where your personnel costs alone are going up by 10% each year, your revenues aren't going up by 10%. Your property tax, you're going to get 5% in a great economy, and your sales tax has been flat this, this year, a little bit of last year, and, you know, 3% growth is fantastic. If I look and I just, I have my budget paperwork with me, things to consider about this community, and I'm going to give a quarter-three budget update as well at the next meeting. On the property tax side, you hear about, you know, that this county is, is poor from property tax. If I look at, if I take a dollar from the property tax from San Benito County, and this is a dollar, it's based on valuation. So remember the valuation of land in the counties that we're comparing ourselves to. San Benito County, the county gets roughly a dime, we get two cents. If you take that same piece of property and you drop it in, you drop it in Santa Clara County, the property itself is probably worth 20% at minimum or more, the cities in that county are going to get five cents on the dollar, and the county's going to get 11 cents. You take that same property in Monterey County, six cents on the dollar for the city, 14 cents on the dollar in the county. And so as you, as you look, we get considerably less per property tax dollar. The same can be said about your cities that you're comparing yourself to. From just a tax basis alone, if I take the city of Monterey, they bring in roughly, on average, $2,500 per person in taxes, property tax, sales tax, user tax, remember there's user utility tax, there's all kinds of different taxes. With Measure W, we bring in about $572. So when you compare us to our neighbors, we bring in less revenue than all of our surrounding areas on this side of the hill. You go over, you go over Pacheco Pass, it's a, it's a different world, it's a different story. But it's not much more of a different story. It's, without Measure W, it's about even. And so that's where ultimately you add all those pieces in on the revenue side, and then you add a projection of every year where things are going. And you had to step in with, with one-time money to balance it in hopes of getting the revenue through. And I was very clear at budget that that was the strategy that this council was, that the council was adopting. And so through all of that, that's going to be the premise of what we bring forward in the next few meetings. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, yeah, that was a really, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Resendez, and then I'll, I'll chime in.
Thank you. No, you more than answered my question. Thank you, city manager. Very thorough, thank you for that. Just, again, a quick summary for me. It sounds like we strayed away from foundational budget, budget strategies, we overspent on one-time monies. I just want to go on the record, this is on the record already, I voted against the budget because of what you had said both times the last couple of years. And now we find ourselves in this crisis that we are in now. So moving forward, I would just say, moving forward, we have to be realistic about where the city of Hollister's finances are, and we have to just operate within that means, I would say. Again, thank you to you, thank you to the fire chief, thank you to the firefighters. I'm also going to go ahead and thank the county, the city of San Juan Batista, as well, for sitting down and negotiating with us. We are, I agree with the vice mayor, we are stronger together, and I think that we would always, always be open to collaborating with them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Morales, go ahead.
I have a completely different summary. So here's my summary. There's been, in terms of the budget, you have to have a balanced budget when you submit it to this thing, prolonged. Since 2014, there's been a lot of circumstances, from audits to economics, to one-time funds, that contributed to where we are today, including the fire contract. As a result, you know, we're going to need to look at our budget in a very different way. So I don't think that we can blame the previous council. 2014 to now, a series of events which I think our city manager explained extremely well. And I'd really like to move away from finger pointing and just problem solving and moving forward. We're going to be, in the next couple of years, we're going to be seeing a lot of additional things, and we really need to focus on solutions and bringing our community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Okay, so I will just kind of bring it back, and I agree that moving forward, we just, we need to be like realistic about where we are now. So I, I agree with Councilmember Morales. Moving forward with solving problems is a, is a good approach, and that's what I fully intend to do as we move forward. What happened in the past is, for me, irrelevant. What we're doing now is what's important, and we will do that. So we, what I will ask our manager, however, as we move forward, I want to be really, really clear about what our reality is. And I think that we always have to keep in mind the two things, it's like, what are our ongoing long-term costs? Make sure that we are addressing those differently from those that are one-time costs and one-time sets of revenue. So we want to make really clear those distinctions so that we're making good decisions about that, we hopefully aren't going to confuse those two and make decisions on ongoing costs based on one-time or short-term or circumstantial, yes, circumstantial revenues. I want to make sure that when we move forward, that we are really focusing on our budget. And clearly, with the change in what's happened with our contract, it looks like we're going to be in a different situation for the fire contract, based on the decisions that our partners have made, that we will have to look at budget differently. So that, so moving, moving on with this conversation and towards like the direction for staff. So first, my, my ask, and I'm going to ask for the rest of the council to chime in and either agree or disagree, so we'll move towards consensus. I think that clearly we, I think it's clear that we should just dissolve the ad hoc. The assignment for the ad hoc was to negotiate the contract. At this stage, there is no contract to negotiate, that's the message that we've gotten from our partners. So then there's no point in having the ad hoc. If at a later date, then there is a need for something different, and we need an ad hoc, then we can entertain that again, and so we can move forward with that. And then secondly, I am, I'm looking forward to information from our city manager about how we move forward on our budget, now that we have to make adjustments based on what it seems to be our new reality related to the fire contract. And then finally, I want to also like reiterate what Councilmember Resendez said in terms of our partners. We are always welcome. We always are, are, we will welcome any conversations moving forward about any changes or any agreements or partnerships that they would like to form related to fire service. We are always open to doing that. At this stage, we, we have to move on with what we're at in terms of what the message we've gotten from them. But if they want to ever come back to the table, we are always going to welcome them coming back to the table. So I would like to just get consensus from the council that we dissolve the ad hoc, that we get a presentation related to, you know, the adjustments based on where we believe we're going, moving forward with our contract at the next council. And, and I guess that, and in terms of any specifics around the contract, I mean, we just have to, we just will move forward. Is that, is that enough direction? Is that, is that enough direction?
I, I would just ask that the next budget meeting we have, at the next meeting will be a quarter three update. Then what happens is, is in June 5th, I believe, or that Monday is, we bring forward the first kind of draft for your input and discussion, with your permission, based on the direction being given. I can work with the fire chief to look at what that looks like, and then give an update there and get your guidance and input. And then we would come back two weeks later for review and public hearing and possible adoption.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so, any, is that good? Councilmember Resendez, any other comments or question?
Just a point of clarity, thank you, Mayor Stevens. So the next meeting is going to be a quarter three budget meeting, and then the following meeting, we're going to talk about what our situation looks like moving forward with the realities that we're looking at then.
That would be your budget premise?
Got it.
Because if, if you are given direction tonight as given, then I have to look at what the impacts of that are, and that would be brought forward at budget. If I were to bring that back at the next meeting, that doesn't give the chief, myself, or union president, time to talk about that. That's, that's, you know, by the time we publish, and we're almost supposed to be publishing the next packet the next few days, so I would just say from having ample time to prepare that and have it ready for budget, that would be a budget consideration.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so then we will be getting a report on those adjustments, not next meeting, but the following meeting, so that's the direction, to give that ample time for the chief and, and the City Manager to work on budget. And then I just want to also get consensus about dissolving the ad hoc. So if I could just do a thumbs up for those.
Direction.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, and I just have to do a quick correction. I have, we have to go back to the weed abatement, public hearing. We did have to get, entertain a motion to receive that report, and I overlooked that piece. I thought we were just getting information, so I apologize for that. So let's, so we need a motion on the resolution for the 2025 weed abatement program.
So moved.
I'll second, Mayor Stevens.
And Roquevold?
Vice Mayor Pache.
I.
Councilmember Resendez?
I.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. And then, so we'll move on to the next item, so committee assignments, so any reports from the fellow council members on any committees or any meetings that you've attended, if you'd like to report. Okay, so I would just do a quick report. I believe that this may have been reported last council meeting when I was out here. This, we had, so I attended a CAG meeting earlier this month where we talked a lot about transit services to Gavilin College, and just, so I just want the public to know that that is something that we are continuing to talk about, and we're working hard to see if we can get those services in place, likely for the fall semester, so we're hoping that that will happen. There'll be more to come to that, and there's a lot of discussion at CAG happening around what's going on with 25, and the, the route that Highway 25 will be taking. And so just be aware of that, and just keep your ears and eyes open about, you know, anything that's coming up on new things related to 25, because we're trying to move those discussions forward quickly, because there is a lot of urgency around our public to, to get more information about what's happening around those two topics. And then finally, I just want to do a quick report. Vice Mayor Pache and I met last week with the Downtown Association. So Omar, Omar Rosas facilitated a meeting and a discussion with, with some downtown business owners around like what they want. We, we talked a lot about what's happening with the rally, and our City Manager came and gave a report. There was a lot of questions about layout and about what they can expect for their businesses, and how, how they, how we, we can make this as a successful rally as possible, and so that was really, that was a really great meeting. And then we moved on to some other things that they were interested in talking about in terms of partnering with the city, more on marketing efforts, as well as just bringing on other events. So anyway, that was a really great meeting. It's a meeting that happens once a month, and I would just extend an invitation to the rest of the council members, that what they ask is that each member attend those meetings, they're, they're reinvigorating their Downtown Association meeting once a month. And so I will be approaching each of you individually to see who, who wants to join me, or Vice Mayor Pache, ensuring that, you know, we're not doing any Brown Act violations, only two of us at a time. So I will be checking in with who wants to come to the next meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday of May, and it's 6 o'clock, the location to be determined. Anyway, I will check in with the rest of you on who, who would like to join us, because I'd like to have all of us attend, Vice, Councilmember Resendez attended that meeting a couple months ago with me, and then Vice Mayor Pache came with me this time, and so I wanted to just make sure that we have good representation and that we're showing support to our Downtown Association. Okay, so that's all I have to report. Anybody else? Just a second, second chances. Councilmember Morales.
I don't have reports, but I would like to request that as information comes out, if we can support CAG in notifying our residents when there's work on 25. A lot of folks are not, you know, they're not on Facebook, they're commuters, and so I've been hearing a lot of folks are, when they're, when they work late shifts, they're trying to get on 25 and it's closed, and so they're having to just go around and not sure how to get through, because they're not really familiar with the different areas. And they're also not very comfortable with the navigator, just because they're unfamiliar with the areas. So it's taking people an extremely long time to just get home. And so if there's a way to amplify CAG's message, or remind folks, it is very important, especially because of the lighting and the weather conditions, it's dangerous.
Okay, good. Yeah, thanks for that, yeah, thanks for that. And I, I can, I can definitely bring that up, we can both bring that up. Councilmember Resendez, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually did bring it up, and I asked them to launch a full-scale marketing campaign, including mailers, videos, just like we did here at the city of Hollister, and I used our campaign that we're launching as an example for them to do the same thing. So, thank you, but it's been brought up and we're moving forward.
We'll just keep bringing it up, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, you too. Okay, so I'm going to move on then. City Manager's report, please.
Yeah, just to add on to that, as part of our campaign, we're, I have staff right now working on the utility bill mailer, so we could put a sentence in there that says, hey, for 25 updates, and, you know, point them to the CAG's website, because they are actively updating that website, so that's non-social media, so we can get that in there. And then lastly, I'd just like to take a moment and recognize our city clerk, Ms. Jen Woodward. A little birdie told me that last week she was honored by the California Municipal Clerks Association at their conference as a recipient of the 2025 President's Award of Distinction for Mentoring. She was recognized not only for accomplishments within the city of Hollister, but also for her dedication to training future clerks through courses, dialogues, and is seen as a professional that her peers can bounce ideas off of and seek guidance. So just wanted to take a minute to put the spotlight on, on Ms. Woodward.
Well, thank you, yes. Thank you. And you support us so much that I can only see how, why you, I, I completely understand the, the honor that they impose on you and the recognition, because I know that if you, if you help them half as much as you help us, that, yeah, it's, they, they are in good hands. So thank you, thank you for all your work. Okay.
Good job. Thanks for all your help.
Okay, so let's move on. We're going to go into closed sessions, so can you read the, the closed session's items, City Attorney?
Yes, I will. Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency Designated Representative City Manager David Marioni. Employee Organization Service Employees International Union SEIU Local 521. Hollister Firefighters Union HFFU Local 3395. Hollister Peace Officer Association HPOA and Unrepresented Employees. 12.2. Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph 2 or 3 of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9 of the Government Code 1 Case. And I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for any public comment.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Do we have any public comment on closed session items?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are going to then move on to closed sessions, so we're going to ask the public to vacate the chamber so that we can move into closed session.